This is TV 30. It's seven o'clock. We are ready to start. And in, and in five, four, three, two, one, cue.
Good evening. Welcome to this, the December 11th meeting in Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos is absent for the record. Councilmember Branning?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kick?
Here.
Mayor Marshawn?
Here. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the flag of the British Union, to the Constitution of America.
Thank you. Moving on to proclamations and presentations. I believe we have a presentation from the Livermore Valley Arts Annual Update by Chris Carter, the Executive Director of Livermore Valley Arts.
Appreciate that. We have a sold out show at the Bankhead tonight, so hopefully I'll be able to make it with pink martini. I do want to start out by saying to all of you, thank you for all of your support of the arts in Livermore, and I can't tell you how much it means to us that we have a space like this for our community. And I like to tell my staff that our product is joy. That's what we deliver to our patrons and to the community. It, we do it as best we can. It, I'm happy to give this report for the 2223 fiscal year, which ended on June 30th this year. And I did print out some copies for all of you and should, you should be able to get them from the clerk. And if you have any questions, you can feel free to ask me. But I'll give you a couple of highlights from the year by the numbers. First, I'll mention to you our mission. The mission of Livermore Valley Arts is to offer a broad range of arts opportunities and experiences to engage our diverse community. And here are some of the highlights from the most recent year. We ended the year with 1,053 member households. Those are donors who give at least $125 or more. That current number is at 1,065. A thousand was kind of the benchmark for us, the golden goal that we wanted to achieve for several years, and we've been able to get over 1,000 now for the last two years, which has been quite remarkable. We had 68 Bankhead Presents performances last year. Twelve of those were sold out shows, 38 resident company performances and events. We had eight community celebrations that were made free to the public, including Native American Day, Taste of Africa, the Filipino Barrio Fiesta, Fiesta, Art Walk, Lunar New Year, AAPI Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Celebration, and Juneteenth. We had over 3, 3,300 visitors to the Uncle Credit Union Art Gallery, and we served 4,242 students through performances, classes, and camps. The other thing I want to note is in regards to investing in the future. So one of the key things that happened during this last year is that we developed a, an investment policy on the Board of Directors, and we were able to set aside a million dollars for a managed fund as an operating reserve for Livermore Valley Arts, which is the first time in the history that we've had any kind of an operating or like that. That amount is the equivalent of three months in expenses, which is the recommended standard for operating reserves. It's managed by Altamont Wealth, which is a local firm, and they also manage Tri Valley Conservancy's fund as well. And then I just checked it today. It's up 8% since we started it last year in November. So it's doing well. And our plan is to continue to add to that as we can, and it's to help us weather all sorts of things that could happen. And as we know, things can happen, right? Next, Uncle Credit Union Art Gallery. I want to talk about our gallery space in the Bankhead Theater in the lobby. It, at the beginning of the year, we started with a ribbon cutting. It's the first naming of the art gallery from Uncle Credit Union, and they did a five-year commitment to support that art gallery naming. And because of them, we're going to be able to deliver much more high-quality exhibits throughout the year. So last year, we had started the year with Ferment, which was a wine-themed exhibit focused mostly on the Livermore Valley Wine Region. Shape, Form, and Color, which was an abstract expressionist art exhibit with three pieces from a private collection by Joan Miro and Alexander Calder. Beauty and Terror with string paintings featuring The Holocaust by Robin Bernstein. And then my favorite was the Violins of Hope exhibit, which was in partnership with the East Bay Holocaust Center, which was in February of last year. And then we ended the year with its only rock and roll, which was also my favorite because it featured a lot of great vintage guitars. As far as programming goes, we had a lot of first-time name, art, big-name artists that came throughout the Bankhead, such as Ben Folds and Jefferson Starship, Mark Maron Syncopated Ladies, Mickey Dolenz from The Monkees, Jose Feliciano, Gabby Moreno, All Is Calm, The Christmas Truce of 1914, Songs We Love from Jazz at the Lincoln Center, and so forth and so on. We also added two new board members this last year. Norm Burkard, who is a longtime employee from the Livermore Lab. He's retired. And then Mark Triska, who's the Senior VP, Senior Vice President at Colliers. Both have been very supportive of the arts over the years, and we're very happy to have them as part of our board. In regards to arts education and community support, we continue to make efforts to celebrate and give access to the arts for all members of the community and support arts education. The following programs from last year are from last year, all of which were underwritten by Livermore Valley Arts as a demonstration of that commitment. So those free cultural celebrations we talked about in the Bankhead Plaza and Art Walk, art camps at the Bothwell Art Center, which were held during the summer, during Thanksgiving break, and winter and spring breaks. We always offer $25 student tickets for every performance. Eight dollar, we did eight-dollar tickets last year for performances for students and families that participated in the Music Pathless Program. We did free family, the Free Family Concert with Livermore Amador Symphony, and we just did it again last week. We have scholarships for all of those art camps and classes to make sure it's affordable for everybody. We have a 50% discount on rental rates for all of our resident companies that perform at the Bankhead. We've spawned, we do sponsorships like the Quest Innovation Fair. And then we have 21 affordable studio spaces for visual artists at the Bothwell Art Center. And also, we support a program called East Bay Jazz High School All-Stars, which is a jazz organization that essentially it's, it's an intensive music program led by Spencer Sussman, who works with these students for six, six months. Once a week, they come and practice and, and learn essentially how to be a professional musician, and they get professional gigs and performances throughout the East Bay that we help facilitate. It's a great opportunity for these students. Additional events that we've done throughout the year, I like to say we're a place for good. And so we do things like we host the Tri, Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance Power of Giving event, the Harmony and Healing Gala, the Violins of Hope Concert Series, the George Bowen Guitar Summit in support of the ALS Could Cure Project. We were a film site for futures explored. And we also partnered with the city of Livermore to bring some events out into the community through the two Springtown events that we did in the late spring and summer. We were very happy to do that. A couple of other things I want to make note of is in the summer of 2023, we did complete our newest strategic plan. It's a five-year plan. And that's available. We submitted to the city over the summer, and that's also available on our website for anybody that wants to see that in full. And it focuses on five areas: financial stability and growth, artistic vitality, organizational stability, community outreach, diversity and inclusion, and then growing our educational vision. And then our financials for the year, we almost hit our goal for our budget. We came very close. We were in general, for the arts industry, this has been a difficult time, and we actually fared much better than most of our colleagues did. We came in about $27,000 short of hitting our goal. But we did end up with over 1,000 members. It, we were able to establish that $1 million reserve, which I thought was a real highlight of the year. And then if you look at our last four years, you'll see a net revenue before depreciation and amortization of 1.25 million. So we're actually in pretty good shape. And this year, we're seeing, keeping my fingers crossed, knocking on wood, it's potentially looking like the best sales year ever for ticket sales in our history. Things are going very well on that end. And I just talked to a couple of my colleagues from California presenters a few years ago, and they're all still down about 20 or 30% in their own ticket sales. So I feel like we're doing something right, and we have a great supportive of a community to help us get through that. That's my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just want to congratulate you and the team that you have. I think as a community, we're very lucky to have such a wonderful place, such a wonderful venue for this kind of performances that you put on there and, and make, make it available to the community as well. I know I went to the TV MPA event and, which was, I think, very, very meaningful for, for everybody that attended and some of the other things like Harmony and Healing and so on and so forth, and Violins of Hope. All tremendous assets to this community. So congratulations, Chris, to you and everybody that works there, because I know it takes more than just one person. It takes a team. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would second all of that and just say that through the past how many ever many years I've lived here, my daughter's nine, so eight years. The amount of improvement I've seen in the marketing collateral and all the things to find out where your shows are and what's happening has, has been marked to me, and I'm excited. I'll be headed there tomorrow with my daughter's third grade class to see the Nutcracker. So I'll see you then.
Thank you. I'll jump in and also, so I do really appreciate everything you've been doing, especially recently. I've seen a much increased outreach to the community at large with free events, the events in front of the Bankhead, in Springtown. And I know those are a lot of work for you to put on, and they're at a loss for you as far as finances go, but there are huge benefits to the community along with, of course, all the great shows you do, all of the great events. And you've been doing just an absolute bang-up job. And so I appreciate what you've been doing in your leadership role and your team as well. Thank you. Thank you.
What all of them said, you know, but also the, my sincere appreciation for the outreach that you do, the Look Behind the Curtain programs that you've had where you invite the public in to see how the magic happens, you know, the ghost lamp. I just think that's, that is such a cool tradition. But all those, those things and also the, like the, bringing in the Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance and showing the work that the community is doing and highlighting all of that in truly a wonderful space and the letting the community know what's happening with Dr. Bedill coming out to present from Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory was just a stellar evening. So all of the, the great mix that you bring in to sort of push people's awareness, things that they might not have gone to see. Those are the sorts of things that you have, and it broadens everybody's horizons. So again, as everybody else has said, thank you so much for the great work that you're doing at the Bankhead Theater for the community as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just to give everybody kind of a heads up, I'm going to reorder the agenda so that 7.3 will come after 7.5. Just, so if you're, if you're waiting for that one, it's about the appointment of the Vice Mayor, sit tight. And I know that's why many of you came tonight, but that's, that'll be coming, 7.3 will be after 7.5. Next, we have 3.2, the Community Asset Management Program. This was something that we did not have a community asset management program until about 2015. And so we started the program, the outreach and uh-oh, there's some drama going on here.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Marashova. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties, but let me just take a moment and announce our presenters. This item is going to be presented by Judy Erlinson, Acting Public Works Director, along with Yosa Ovayave, Senior Management Analyst. Thank you.
Okay, good. I thought it was something I had done wrong. So it's not my fault. Okay, good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and Members of the City Council. This evening's presentation provides the final report from the Camp Committee. So for some background, the Camp Committee was formed by the City Council in 2016 to represent the community in asset management planning and community outreach. The committee had between six and nine members and met as needed. The final meeting was held on August 23rd, 2023. The committee's accomplishments include provided perspective and input to help guide staff on asset management strategies and attended public outreach events, successfully completed the review and approval of several asset-backed sheets, championed the Asset Management GeoCash Interactive Game, which won two Capio Awards for Most Innovative Communications. And the city would like to thank the committee members for their contribution to the asset management program. So what's next for asset management? Staff will continue public education and outreach, continue to prioritize investments in public infrastructure, propose policies to reduce costs and improve service levels, and protect the quality of life in Livermore over the long term. Thank you for your consideration, and that concludes the presentation.
Any questions? Thank you for the tremendous amount of work. Neil, thank you so much for the great work that you did on that. That was a lot of people don't understand the importance of asset management. They just think of you buy once, but it was very important to put in, for example, sinking funds so that we can buy those assets back once they've reached their end of useful life. And so there's a lot of work, a lot of public engagement. And I sincerely appreciate all the work that was done on that. And certainly, the work is not finished. This is going to be ongoing, but at least this gives us a good target of what we need to continue to do. So thank you very much. And, and thank you for all the members of the Asset Management Plan that, that put in all the, the time, effort, and the hours. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we've got something new on the agenda that I get to put on there since I'm the mayor. But this is something that's very special. I was, last week, we read an extraordinarily long proclamation. Because actually, we had to use the supersize to get all of the great accomplishments in that had been done over so many years. But this is a plaque from the city of Livermore in honor of over 21 years of service to local government by Christine Martin. She is recognized for outstanding dedication and commitment to the Livermore community. So thank you very much for the great, great work that you did.
Hey, so you can come on down and we'll
Mr. Mayor, I know you didn't invite me to say a few words, but I'll take the opportunity in lieu of Christine and just say just a couple of things. As you all know, I have been with the city for, feels like 18 months or so. And Christine certainly was instrumental in transitioning me to this role from my long-term predecessor, who's here watching us, Mark Roberts in the audience. But also Christine was instrumental in transitioning new council members to their new roles and certainly was instrumental in developing and implementing the city's first comprehensive strategic plan. Christine always amazed me by her compassion, by her kindness, by her interest in making a difference in the city. So I am certainly very grateful for the opportunity to, to be working with her. And I will just mention very quickly that we're also really fortunate that we have amazing internal talent here in the city. And with Christine's departure, we'll be able to replace her with another amazing individual who's right here next to me, Paul Spence, currently serving as the Director of Community Development. So great changes happening in the city. Grateful to you, Christine, for your service and grateful to you, Paul, for stepping into this position. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And as I understood Paul to say at the, last week, you said that you were actually her mentor. So that's why she rose to such great levels. And that's why you are following in her, in her footsteps. So look forward to more great things. So again, thank you for all of the great contributions that you've made to this community. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the open forum. So, Mr. City Clerk, will you explain how people can participate?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council agendas provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a City Council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the City Council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on the items pulled for discussion and a separate comment on the remaining consent calendar. To provide public comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced in the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so starting with 7:22, so at 7:52, we'll conclude. Do you have any speakers?
The first speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Mark Roberts, followed by John Stein.
Mayor Marshawn, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, audience, I'm Greg Scott. It's been over six years since I first came to this meeting and talked about homeless. And I asked the question, as I ask today, where do you expect homeless to go? What do you expect them to do? Why do you think they won't go to the shelters? It's a moral question, really. The big picture is a moral question, but you can't deny that homelessness is in a legal framework. And a lot of questions are coming up now. We, in days to a matter of weeks, we are going to probably have a case reviewed by the U.S. Supreme Court, Jackson versus Grants Pass, Grants Pass, Oregon. That is about civil citations to homeless on public areas. So it's again, the fundamental question is, where do you expect the homeless to go? What are we going to do about their vulnerability? Another case that is, comes about in Sacramento County is the District Attorney Thane Ho has sued the municipality of Sacramento on the homeless issue. And certain things have come up surrounding that case. One is, in all of the, a number of these cases is whether or not to force homeless to shelters. And there's not enough shelter space. Homeless don't want to go there. And so surrounding that case in Sacramento is another idea, you're going to love this, is having a space for tents for the homeless. Now, Mayor Marshawn, I think we have one thing we could agree on. Having a space just, and it's in regard to you asking me the question a month ago, having just a space for tents for homeless would be a disaster. You have to have a framework for that space. The most important thing of the framework is public safety. And where do you start? I would start with asking your chief of police, how many police live in the city of Livermore? Get that percentage. What we want to do is get more police to live in the city of Livermore. You want more skin in the game. You've got to build a public safety framework, and this is not what they're thinking in Sacramento with this idea. Now, I understand for years you haven't listened to me, but you have heard the words. Or, Mr. Mayor Marshawn, you wouldn't have asked that question. I think it was very courageous. You asked that question a month ago. So you have to build a framework. You can't just have homeless in an area of tents. That, that's not going to work. And you also, if you get more, like new recruits, get tiny houses for new recruits, get housing for new recruits in the community. Then, after that, is you build a social services framework. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Roberts, followed by John Stein.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Wanted to come out and discuss just a few quick things with you this evening. The first is to congratulate Assistant City Manager Christine Martin and Planning Manager Steve Stewart on their retirements, each having performed for the city for more than 20 years. Their contributions have been dramatic to the quality of life here in the city. And I know I will miss them, and many people will miss the things that they did for the city. So thank you both for your contributions over that long period of time to those of us who are residents here. Second is to congratulate Community Development Director Paul Spence on his promotion to Assistant City Manager Paul. Congratulations. It's a, quite a difficult job and an incredibly important one. So thank you for stepping up and doing that, and we will all appreciate your contributions to the city in doing that. Next, I wanted to talk to, about a couple of items related to my current role as the President of the LARPD Foundation. So the LARPD Foundation is a 501(c)(3), so that's a nonprofit. And we provide recreation and wellness opportunities for the underserved in our community, as well as funds for projects that enhance parks and open space. For example, this last year, we funded scholarships for more than 300 individuals to participate in swim lessons, summer camps, classes and programs, as well as a number of great projects to enhance our local parks, everything from trail guides to owl boxes, to snake terrarium, to stereomicroscopes, to science camp pop-up tents, and the list goes on and on. So a lot of very cool things that we're able to add to the parks and add to the community to allow people to experience the parks and services that LARPD has to offer without essentially having their income stand in the way. The scholarships provide up to 85% of the funds for that. Last item I want you to do is to save the date for 2024 Wind Down in the Ravenswood on June 21st, 2024. It's a great fundraiser. Finally, if you're looking for that great idea for a gift at the end of the year, a membership in the LARPD Foundation costs $100, provides you a parking pass to Sycamore Grove. Finally, as a local resident, I wanted to thank you all, staff, and all of you elected officials for your contributions to the city, all of the hard work that you do, and wish you a happy holiday season. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Stein.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'd like to speak on the open space buffer between Livermore and Dublin. There will be a connection between Dublin Boulevard and North Canyons Parkway. Friendly relations between Livermore and Dublin are important, but in the negotiations, sideboards are important too. Improvements, route, cost sharing for construction and maintenance are negotiable. However, the residents of Livermore are strongly committed to maintaining what remains of the open space buffer between Livermore and Dublin. And I'd like to sort of caution you, Dublin is growing rapidly and the only direction they can grow in is eastward. So there's a great deal of pressure on expansion. I'd also like to question you about incrementalism. I think what Dublin will say is, well, the open space buffer is too wide. Let's just cut it in half. And we'll do lush landscaping and it will actually look better. And a few years from now, they'll say, well, the open space buffer is so narrow, nobody notices as they whiz by on 580. And we can eliminate it and no one will notice. And then they'll say, well, we've now reached Doolin Canyon and there's a lot of developable land on the north side of Doolin Canyon and Collier Canyon. Let's look at that now. So I think it's important that we maintain the open space buffer because once it's gone, it's gone forever. I also share Councilmember Carling's skepticism about the $160 million price tag. The majority of the extension is actually within the city limits of Dublin. About nine tenths of a mile of that is within Dublin. And that should be paid for with the development that occurs around it. The other thing is that the route is expected to be six lanes wide with curbs, gutters, sidewalks, landscaping, traffic signals, interchanges, and a whole host of water and sewer improvements. That would look out of place in an open space buffer. So I would urge that you strongly support maintaining what remains of the open space buffer now and for the future. It's important both as a wildlife corridor and as habitat for the tiger salamander, as well as a number of other endangered species. So again, once open space is lost, it's lost forever. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there anyone that wishes to pull anything for consent? Okay, do we have any public comment for consent?
No public comment, sir.
Okay, very good. These are typically passed with one motion being routine in nature. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Paul's second.
Moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Kick. End of discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Gosh unanimously. Thank you. Onto is no public hearings, moving on to matters for consideration. Seven point one is resolution amending the Livermore minimum standards at the airport.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager Mariana Marasheva. Item seven point one is going to be presented by Judy Earlison, Acting Public Works Director, along with Benny Stuth, Acting Airport Manager. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm Benny Stuth, the Acting Airports Manager here with Judy Earlison, the Acting Public Works Director. We have before you item seven point one, which is the airport minimum standards for commercial activity update for the provision of unleaded fuel. Currently at Livermore Airport, we have one fixed-based operator who is exclusively selling the fuel at Livermore Airport. They currently sell 100 low lead fuel, which is a leaded fuel, and jet A, which is a kerosene-based fuel. So why are we here? Livermore Airport, the transition to unleaded fuel really is stemming from the EPA's determination endangerment finding, where they have found that lead emissions from aviation fuel poses a risk to public health. The FAA similarly has determined that the leaded fuel must be eventually discontinued and replaced by a alternative. On October 2023, your council directed staff to look at the airport's minimum standards to require unleaded fuel provision on the airfield. And as such, staff has updated those minimum standards requiring the provision of unleaded aviation fuel, which is in the resolution before you today. Just to take a look at how the transition would look like now into the future, our current fuel supply is 100 low lead and jet A. As you'll see, about sixty-five percent of that is jet A and thirty-five percent is 100 low lead. These numbers you have here during the transition, these are kind of an estimate. But basically what we're showing you here is as we add unleaded fuel to the airfield, it will slowly phase out that leaded fuel until such time that one is permanently available in the marketplace, at which point we would fully transition over to unleaded aviation fuel. The FAA has been working with industry partners through the Eagle Initiative to come up with an unleaded aviation fuel alternative. A hundred octane, it's an ASTM certification. It's differentiated from an STC certification that you'll see later. And basically what that is, is an ASTM certification is a standard for fuel creation that anybody could come in and develop fuel according to those standards and it can be dropped into any tank with any supplier. STC certifications are separate from that and require special certificates in order for it to be able to be used. The FAA has additionally determined that federally obligated airports, which Livermore Airport is one, must continue to offer 100 low lead aviation fuel until an alternative is readily available. A 100 low lead alternative, a hundred octane level, has been developed and approved by the FAA for general use outside of the Eagle program, so under the STC certification. However, it is not yet available in the marketplace. Right now, currently UL94, which is a ninety-four octane alternative, which is a stopgap fuel, meaning that once a 100 octane fuel is available, that fuel will likely go away, is currently available, but only to a limited number of aircraft. Unleaded UL94 fuel is available in the Bay Area and around the states. It is currently available in San Martin, Reed Hillview, Hayward, San Carlos, Watsonville, Oxnard, Van Nuys, Burbank, Santa Monica and Long Beach airports. Only Santa Clara County has made the push through San Martin and Reed Hillview airports to outright ban the sale of 100 low lead, which currently is under investigation by the FAA for those grants assurance obligations that they're under. All other airports are offering 100 low lead alongside UL94. Currently, the prices range around the state in between seven and $10 a gallon for UL94. It ranges about five to $7 a gallon for 100 low lead. So for the transition unleaded fuel for the minimum standards update, staff has presented these minimum standards to the Airport Commission in order to get their discussion input. The Airport Commission has responded back at that meeting. And their response basically was to replace very specific language that was originally included and to make the requirement a little bit more general to allow for increased flexibility. The resolution includes in it a timeline of up to 24 months. So if adopted and passed, there would be a 24-month timeline by which an FBO that serves fuel at the airport would have to abide by in order to provide unleaded fuel at the airport. However, the city is currently working with the Bay Area Air Management Quality District to recertify a tank that is already on the airfield. And if that is done, we would be able to get unleaded fuel onto the airfield much sooner. So the recommendation, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the update to the commercial aeronautical activity minimum standards. These includes updates to the definitions on all available aviation fuel. It establishes requirements so that an unleaded aviation fuel alternative is provided. And it establishes a timeline by which unleaded aviation fuel alternative is provided at Livermore Airport. It also includes language, if anything is to happen that's outside of everyone's control that could potentially extend that timeline. It gives the airport and the city manager the authority to be able to accommodate for that and remain as flexible as possible. And with that, we go ahead and open up for questions.
Okay, any questions this time? Yes.
Can you go back to the slide about the transition to unleaded fuel? I believe it's slide four. The one with the bubbles on it, that one. I just wanted to point out this, these bubbles are confusing in the size of them. So the unleaded fuel transition, it's not that 100 low lead sales are going to increase before they decrease. If you see jet A is 65% of all sales, 100 LL is 35% of all sales. But then at the bottom left corner, that's of non-jet A sales. So kind of comparing apples to oranges in sizes, it just immediately looked to me like 100 LL was going to go up before it went down. But I just wanted to clarify that it will technically be going down. The bubbles are just a little confusing.
So the seventy to ninety percent of non-jet A sales would apply to that 35%.
Yes. That was all.
Thinking to a public comment?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Felicia Ziomic, followed by Don Milanese, followed by Shirley Lewandowski.
Good evening, City Council Members. Thank you for initiating the city resolution amendment to mandate that the FBO start selling unleaded aviation fuel. The family whose four-year-old child tested positive for blood lead had all their pipes replaced in 2019. Their house, built in 1968, was repainted several times inside and out after lead was banned from paint in 1978 and drank only filtered water. Due to the presence of lead in their child's blood, they moved out of the area in October. Using Google Maps, the distance, as the crow flies, between the east end of the runway and their house is 0.81 miles. And the distance is 1.16 miles from the midpoint of the runway. Studies at Reed Hillview Airport showed that children living one half to one and a half miles away experienced a modest increase in blood lead level. CDC states, quote, "No safe blood lead level in children has been identified. Even low levels of lead in blood have been shown to affect IQ, ability to pay attention and academic achievement," unquote. It also causes stunting of skeletal growth in children and delay fracture healing. The number of takeoffs and landings at Livermore Airport is roughly equivalent to Reed Hillview Airport. And just under 292,000 gallons of 100 LL fuel were sold at Livermore Airport in the 12 months ending October 2023. A study done at Santa Monica Airport showed that the one-to-two-minute exhaust during run-up while the airplane was stationary contributed the most lead emissions. And the wind is primarily from west to east, so the wind helps move the lead toward the east. In October, the EPA released their final finding that lead emissions from aircraft engines operating on leaded fuel cause or contribute to air pollution that endangers public health and welfare. The half-life of lead, which refers to the time it takes for the concentration to decrease by half after exposure has stopped, varies from about a month in blood, one to one and a half months in soft tissue, and about 25 to 30 years in bone. A timeline needs to be established to stop selling leaded fuel. That deadline sensitizes pilots. If their aircraft isn't certified for unleaded fuel, they need to find funding sources for certification and pursue it. In anticipation of Livermore Airport stopping the sale of leaded fuel, the airport and city staff should network with other California airports to share information on funding sources such as FAA grants for additional fuel tanks, the funding available for pilots to get their plane certified to use unleaded fuel and learn best practices for the steps involved in this evolution to using unleaded fuel. There are at least seven airports in California that sell unleaded fuel with which to network. According to agenda item 5.4 tonight, the ground lease between the city and Livermore Petroleum will benefit the Airport Enterprise Fund by additional revenue in excess of $36,000. Those funds can be used to finance the various steps in certain... How many more children who live near the airport need to have lead in their blood before the city will accelerate stopping the sale of lead fuel? The timeline needs to be accelerated for the sake of the children who live near the airport. Thank you.
The next speaker is Don Milanese, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by John Stein.
Good evening, every City Council and staff. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, and so I have a very short statement which she's written. My thoughts on unleaded aviation fuel. The Livermore Airport Commission voted for it. Other small airports have embraced it. Healthy children need it. Be in the forefront of a good change. Show that Livermore is a model of responsibility. Please go for it. Linda Milanese. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by John Stein, followed by Donna Kabang.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members and Staff. I'm Shirley Lewandowski, a Dublin resident of 34 years. Time is of the essence. I'm glad this council is following the EPA's mandate to stop the sale of leaded aviation gas and transition to unleaded gas. You've given Five Rivers Aviation two years with potentially additional extension to transition fully to a more publicly safe, no-lead fuel. However, since time is of the essence, do you know who doesn't have the luxury of two more years to wait for unleaded gas? The four-year-old Livermore boy, who lived less than a mile from the airport, doesn't have time. He already has lead in his blood that's seeping into his bones. He will have physiological and mental challenges as he grows up and his parents having to deal with how best to give him a quality of life. How about the other children, adults, living near the airport that we don't know about, who may also have lead in their bloodstreams and bones? One victim we know about is one too many. How will the council feel if there are more neighborhoods with many more victims? Besides getting the Bay Area Quality Management District to recertify the 1,000-gallon tank existing at the FBO site, I know there is more you can do. There must be additional funds and grants the city can get to financially help the FBO to buy a 10,000 to 15,000-gallon tank in readiness for when the UL100 unleaded fuel becomes available next year. I would also like to clarify a comment made by the mayor at a November meeting regarding the airport flight school at the University of North Dakota, going back to using leaded fuel because of an issue when they went to unleaded fuel. I did research and I found an article written at the end of this year, November, about it. The article described the issue of exhaust valve recession. It is succinctly said, and I quote the article, "Exhaust valve recession can result in valve discoloration and erode guide." Adding that, at this time, no one has attributed the exhaust valve recession to a lack of lead in the fuel. The University of the Airport School is continuing to conduct a full and complete investigation on the real cause of exhaust valve recession. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Stein, followed by Donna Kabang, followed by Pete Sandu.
As an engineer, I do have some questions I guess I'd like answers on. First, I'd like to thank you for providing unleaded fuel at the airport. The supply will be there. I just wonder about the demand. Is there any data on the airports that have installed unleaded fuel tanks as to what the consumption is? There are a number of issues that, a number of aircraft are not certified to use unleaded fuel. Unleaded fuel is incompatible with synthetic lubricants. There are questions about maintenance and engine lifetime, and there's of course the large cost differential. So I was wondering, not only what supply is, but what demand is. Also, are there any specific surveys that have been done at the Livermore Airport as to what the effect of using the low-lead fuel is? Do we have any ideas of what the level of air pollution or accumulation in soils are? Do we have any ideas of what the level of air pollution or accumulation in soils are, or even whether there are elevated blood levels of lead in the areas around the airport? There there are a number of different sources of lead. I mean, lead is one of the most common elements. It's in soils. It's in paints, or it was in paints. It's in a lot of buried phone cables. And there's also the large accumulation from decades of use for motor fuel for automobiles. So it would be interesting to have a comparison of lead levels around the airport versus areas far from the airport. Again, I'm an engineer and would like facts. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Kabane, followed by Pete Sandu.
Good evening. The Airport Commission recommended that the fixed-based operator, excuse me, start selling unleaded aviation fuel at Livermore Airport. Staff has taken some preliminary steps to implement this minimal airport standard. However, the staff is recommending the FBO be given a two-year timeline with possible extensions to start selling unleaded aviation fuel. This is too long. Surely, we can reduce the timeline. One year should be sufficient. At least ten California airports now sell unleaded aviation fuel safely, including Hayward, Oxnard, Reed Hillview, San Carlos, San Martin, Burbank, Van Nuys, Long Beach, Santa Monica, and Watsonville. How did these airports achieve this transition more rapidly? It's time for Livermore to follow their lead. Thirty-five airports nationwide currently offer unleaded aviation fuel. We are not asking for a ban on leaded AV fuel, only to offer unleaded fuel as an option. A second fuel tank for unleaded fuel exists at LVK, but only holds a thousand gallons. The city should consider purchasing an additional eight thousand five hundred gallon fuel tank using Airport Enterprise Funds. FAA grants are also available for additional fuel tanks. The price difference between leaded and unleaded fuel would be about one dollar more per gallon. Some pilots may choose to go to other airports to avoid that minimal difference in price. However, I believe most pilots owning piston-engine aircraft at LVK will choose to protect the health of the community if an alternative is available. A one-dollar-a-gallon difference is not much to ask to support the health of Tri-Valley children and residents. We removed lead from car fuel. Now we need to do the same with aviation fuel for small piston-engine aircraft. The council needs to shorten the two-year timeline. The council could offer incentives to the FBO to sell unleaded fuel sooner and reduce lead air exposure from small piston aircraft at LVK. For the health of Tri-Valley residents, the council needs to modify the proposed minimal airport standards to require the sale of unleaded aviation fuel in less than two years. Thank you to the city staff and airport staff for their work on this issue, and thank you for considering this tonight. Thank you.
The last speaker is Pete Sandu.
Hi, good evening. I think the general consensus is that lead is bad, and I agree, everybody, all the pilots agree. No one, no one likes lead. We're all looking forward to the day where suitable replacements are available. And and this is a step in the right direction. It's an interim step, but it's a step in the right direction. And there are some pilots that can take advantage and will take advantage of it, and and every little bit counts, and we appreciate that. So I'm not here to 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 say anything negative about the idea. One of the things that I want to do is just tweak some of the wording, because I think the way it's written might be a little bit too limiting. And we already have fuels that for aviation that are beyond what what we're currently providing at the airport and and even beyond some fossil fuels. In the fossil fuel arena, already available is sustainable aviation fuel, and we hope to start introducing that as well at Livermore, actually within the next few weeks or a couple of months. Additionally, here at Livermore, startup companies have successfully flown aircraft using natural gas, biogas, propane. And then we have companies that have just come to Livermore and have Livermore employees currently that are using hydrogen and hydrogen fuel cell aircraft. So we're really excited about some of these advancements. We have other companies that want to come to Livermore with battery-electric aircraft. There's, there's a lot more in the realm of aviation fuels than we're addressing today. And rather than come back to this document from time to time and say, oh, yeah, let's add another and another and another. I would suggest that in the definition for aviation fuels, we choose something that's more generic so that we don't have to keep revisiting this document over and over again. You know, any stored energy that is loaded onto an aircraft for the purpose of propulsion is an aircraft fuel, instead of naming all of them and then revising that list from time to time. Because we we are more progressive than many airports. We have lots of examples of airports that are using UL ninety-four, and that's, again, a very nice addition, but it's an interim step. And then later on in the in the amendment for part two, it says at a minimum, the FBO should do jet avgas and unleaded avgas. And optionally, the FBO provider may offer mogas. Instead of mogas, if requested or desired, I would suggest the FBO provider may offer other aviation fuels as we defined more more broadly. There's a paragraph at the beginning of three A that also indicates very similar. That could be stricken from from it because it's it's kind of redundant. And the last, last edit, again, is the FB, you know, requires the FBO to to make available jet A avgas and unleaded avgas, and optionally, again, mogas. We could strike the optional one and then just change unleaded avgas to unleaded aviation fuel. Because there's lots of different terms that are going out there, but they mean the same thing. And before, I know my time's up, but before I go, I'd like to thank all of the efforts. We've been making fantastic project progress with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. I just got off the phone with them as late as five forty-five this evening, and it sounds like we might have some good news before the end of the week. So thank you. Thank you for that. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Sandu. Okay, we're going to close the public comment period. He's the last speaker, correct? Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the to the council. Does anybody have additional questions?
First of all, thank you to all the folks that have spoken this evening. And thanks to the staff for the report. Mr. Stuth, you mentioned when you were speaking that you said something about if the ta- tank is recertified, that there's some question that it can be or will be. How, can you help me understand that?
Mr. Sandu might actually be able to answer that question a little bit better, but I I the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is the one that is in charge of the recertification of the tank, so they need the history of the tank. They need to be find out exactly where it came from and what it's actually ultimately going to be repurposed for so that their permit engineer can actually see if it meets those certifications and standards that it needs to meet in order for that fuel usage. And if so, then they would have the ability to actually issue the permit for its recertification. So if at any point in that process, they find something that may not necessarily meet certification, then it might not be able to be permitted. So that's why the if exists, because we're not, we're not that agency and we don't have much say into what they do or say. However, in all the conversations we have had with them, as Pete has reiterated to you, things do look promising, and it does look like they may be able to actually recertify that tank.
Is that what we might know by the end of the week? Is that what you're talking about? Okay, thank you. So I think one of the concerns, too, is that it's a relatively small tank, which is a good start, but I think the other thing is, and I know that the city's been talking about considering purchasing a larger tank. Is that still something that we would consider?
Councilmember Carling, I'll respond. This is your city manager, Mariana Marshova. In conversations with Mr. Sandu, it was at Mr. Sandu's request for us to hold off on any plans to purchase a larger tank. And in the meantime, really focus our efforts on facilitating that recertification by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District of the smaller tank to allow for that intermediate transition.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing. So I wondered about Mr. Sandhu's edits to the to the document. Do those meet with your approval? I would, I would make one editorial comment about that. I know Mr. Sandhu has got great plans, because he and I have spoken several times about how he would like to move the airport forward in terms of offering a variety of fuels, as he mentioned earlier, including hydrogen fuel cells. But I think we cannot lose sight of the immediate need of going to low-lead. And my editorial comment is I don't want any of us to lose sight of that as the priority. I appreciate all the other thoughts and ideas you have about future fuels, even even non-fossil fuels out there in the future, but I think we need to pay attention to the priority here, and that's getting to offering low-lead, no-lead, unleaded fuel, excuse me, as soon as possible. So thank you.
As we're bringing.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of quick questions or a couple of questions for staff. First of all, it's been brought up about the timeline. Can you help me understand why we decided on the twenty-four-month timeline?
So basically, the twenty-four-month timeline was basically devised about what we reasonably might be able to expect in terms of putting together a plan and then getting through the permitting and entitlement process and environmental documentation process as well. Sometimes those processes can be rather lengthy. Sometimes they can be truncated down and gone through quicker. But until you actually get into the process, there's no way of actually knowing, which is why we have those buffers built in. So it's entirely possible that we can get into that process and it can go quicker. But it's also entirely possible we get in that process, and that's exactly what it's going to end up taking in order to be fulfilled.
Okay, so my understanding is our hopes would be to do this as quickly as possible, but there are a number of factors outside of our control that could extend it for quite a reasonable amount of time.
That is correct. It is our every intention to make it as speedy as absolutely possible, but make sure that we're doing so conscientiously and responsibly.
Then my understanding is Mr. Sandu is also participating fully in trying to make this go as quickly as possible. So I also agree on, I do think one of my concerns before Mr. Sandu spoke, actually, was that this is a little bit overly limiting on the fuels that we can use. I wanted to make sure that we did have language in there that doesn't require this to come back to council every time. There is a technological advance, something comes along that would be appropriate, that is, you know, such as hydrogen or other fuel cells or other options. I'd prefer that they, that we do have language that would allow that as a staff-level decision, as long as it's meeting the standards that we are setting forth of being unleaded gas that we are selling the appropriate types. I want to reiterate what Councilmember Carling said. The goal is to transition to a fully unleaded gas at the airport as quickly as possible. I understand that that's not an easy process, but I believe everyone here is committed to that as fast as we possibly can do it. I also do believe that Mr. Stein had some good points, that while we're in the transition phase, getting some data on demand is very important. We can try to push this quickly. However, the FAA is requiring the option of leaded gas currently. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So while the FAA is requiring the option of leaded gas, we may well find that because of the price differential, because of licensing issues, that we just don't have the demand. So I agree with Mr. Sandu that starting with a smaller tank is the right thing to do. A large investment before we have any data might just prove to make the price of the fuel even more expensive, which would mean even fewer people using it. So hopefully, we are selling out a thousand gallons so quickly that Mr. Sandu says this is a moneymaker. I need another tank as quick as we can. The city will help facilitate that, and we can move even faster. But while there's options, pilots are going to choose. And for some pilots, they're going to simply choose based on the bottom line. For some pilots, they will choose for environmental and health reasons. The pilots, while they have the option, will have that option. I think other than that, I do want to thank our commenters. This is, I think, a great example of people saw an issue that they thought with the city. There was something they did not agree with. They brought it to our attention. I believe staff acted incredibly quickly for such a complex process. What you see in, but from this end, looks fairly straightforward and simple, but if you talk to staff on the backend, this was actually a huge process to get to this point. It was a lot of negotiating and a lot of work. And to manage that in just a matter of months is very impressive from the issue being brought up to actually having a remedy in place. So thank you to staff and thank you to the commenters for bringing this to our attention.
Let's move.
I had some of those same questions, so I'm not going to bother re-asking those. I will bring up a comment that I made during the development. Wasn't, it wasn't agreement. It was the
Airport Development Policy?
Policy, the development policy. I believe I asked if we could put a hard timeline of twenty thirty to be in line with the Eagle Initiative. As we are moving forward with this quicker than it was expected at the time of that development policy, is it possible to relook into that to really put our language in to to reaffirm that commitment that we want to be on board with the Federal Aviation Administration's goals. I think it is appropriate considering we're moving forward. I think we have more information now than we did then. And twenty thirty is still the current goal of the FAA, and I I think it is it makes perfect sense for us to be in line with the main authority on on flight and fuel.
Okay, very good. Okay, back to slide five. Says that a one-hundred-octane, one-hundred LL alternative has been developed and approved. That is, is that the GAMMY fuel?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so the GAMMY fuel, is that available in California today?
No, it is not.
And probably not for a while.
We did have a meeting with the president and chief engineer of GAMMY just a few short weeks ago and spoke to them about its availability, because questions have arisen about its availability elsewhere. And they have let us know that it is not available anywhere else outside of where they're producing it now, except for at test sites. But they are expecting that they are going to prioritize the West Coast when it is, the manufacturing plant is fully production. And so that they would be looking to bring it out here by the end of next year to early twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and that's, so that is the drop-in replacement. Now, there is this ninety-four LL that that's that is available, that's the low lead or the unleaded. But it's my understanding that that you can't just drop that into a piston engine that uses leaded fuel right now.
Yes, that's my understanding as well.
There has to be a certification. The FAA both requires certification of the engine and the frame.
Right, so in order to be able to use it, a pilot would have to Right, so in order to be able to use it, a pilot would have to apply for a supplemental type certificate for both the airframe. And the engine itself um, together in order to legally be able to use that fuel.
Right, it's my understanding that that can run into several hundreds if up to a thousand dollars.
Yes, it depends on the uh, pretty much on the horsepower of the aircraft. They've broken it down. It about averages $2 per horsepower of the aircraft, so um, that could range anywhere from a few hundred to a few thousand dollars, just depending.
Yeah, what was interesting, I thought, was I contacted the uh, Bay Area Air Quality Management District. Uh, and out of the 11 airports in the nine Bay Area counties, Livermore was the only one that received a letter from them about. Selling leaded fuel. Uh, so I asked him, you know, why that was. Uh, but they also, uh, what I suggested to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is that in order to incentivize pilots. To make the transition, because you were talking about several hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, uh. A difference of a gallon, a dollar per gallon is one thing. Coming up with a thousand dollars to have your plane certified. Just whether or not it can run unleaded fuel. I thought I made the suggestion to uh, uh, Bay Area Air Quality Management District that they um, provide grants. Uh, to incentivize pilot, incentivize pilots so that they would pay for the certification of the planes, and that would encourage pilots to more quickly. Uh, if possible, move to uh, to the unleaded fuels. Uh, I haven't heard back yet, though, so I think that was uh, uh, that's certainly a possibility because we all want to move as quickly as possible. But we've also heard that these fuels are not available or they may not be compatible. Uh, similarly, a pilot can just go to the airport next to us and buy. Leaded fuel, even though we're only selling unleaded. So that's, that's why it has to be a regional effort if we're actually going to succeed at this. So I think we're all committed to this. Um, with that, uh. Is there a motion on this? There is, okay. Do I have a motion?
Uh, a motion, staff's recommendation with the small change in language to allow additional fuel types.
Okay, uh, moved by council member Branning.
Uh, I'll second, and I just want to clarify with staff, uh, would it be a friendly amendment to bring back on consent? The addition of us making a 2030 commitment? Um, or would that have need to be a separate matters initiated?
Haven't we already committed?
Vice Mayor Kick is your city attorney.
They did not.
Um, it probably makes sense to have that as a separate item.
Okay, thank you. So I will second uh, Branning's. What are these called? I'm so tired. Uh, motion, I will second Branning's.
Motion made by council member uh, Branning, seconded by Vice Mayor Kick. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Is the motion clear?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Uh, 7.2, discussion and direction regarding City Council Subcommittee for Advisory Body Reviews, recommending changes to uh, uh, city advisory bodies.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Marshan and members of the City Council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marasheva. Item 7.2 is going to be presented by Debbie Elam, Assistant City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Debbie Elam, your acting, excuse me, your acting city clerk. Tonight, the item before you is the City Council Subcommittee's recommendations regarding the advisory body review. The city of Livermore currently has nine standing advisory bodies that work at the pleasure of the city council. The city created a five-year strategic plan earlier this year, and one goal is to engage effectively with advisory bodies. Under that goal includes the project of reviewing all advisory bodies to ensure alignment with the strategic plan and other guiding documents and council direction. In March of this year, city clerk staff started meeting with advisory body liaisons to review each body's rule of procedure, which includes duties, responsibilities, and objectives. In July of this year, the city council appointed a two-member subcommittee for advisory body review, which includes Vice Mayor Kick and council member Branning. In August, staff presented the results of their review to the subcommittee. In October, the subcommittee finalized their review and directed staff to bring back the subcommittee's recommendations to council. The four main subcommittee recommendations are to sunset the beautification committee. To sunset the historical preservation commission. To move the oversight of the commission for the arts from Innovation and Economic Development Department to the library. And to convert the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, also known as LIAC, from a city commission to a library activity. The recommendation to sunset the beautification committee was based on several factors. First, many of the duties the committee was originally responsible for have fallen to staff due to the need for technical expertise. For example, review of designs for landscape areas or tree choices are handled by staff with professional expertise, such as a planner or an arborist. Next, some advisory objects objectives are no longer current. For example, the Free Street Tree program ended over 15 years ago. Although not listed as a duty or responsibility in the rules of procedure, the beautification committee is listed in the municipal code as the body to hear street tree appeals. Staff in conjunction with the city attorney's office are in the process of updating the process for appeals citywide. An option staff is considering is having an independent third party hear street tree appeals, similar to neighborhood preservation appeals. If council decides to sunset the beautification committee, staff confirmed that the Arbor Day and Beautification Awards would continue with public work staff and volunteers. In addition, opportunities for the public to provide input on city landscaping and trees. Sorry, could occur through um. Planning Commission or City Council. The city values its historic properties, and over the years, the Historic Preservation Committee has completed very important work. Preserving properties such as the Railroad Depot and preserving Livermore history by approving plaques that outline the historical significance of properties. In conjunction with the Historic Preservation Commission, staff created a historic context statement, an inventory of city parcels for historic significance. Revised the certificate of appropriateness standards and updated the development code, zoning map, and downtown specific plan to ensure the preservation of historical properties. The new properties related to historical, the new policies related to historical properties reduce the number of projects that require historical review either by staff or by the commission. Properties that would require review are now based on potential historical significance as opposed to simply being over 50 years old for some. In the past, a larger portion of properties required a review due to age. In future years of the strategic plan, there could be an additional review of the remaining properties that could reduce the number even further. Due to the limited number of projects brought before the commission, there's only been a need for the body to meet five times since 2021, when the new policies went into effect. The commission did not meet in 2023. If the city decides to sunset the commission, the review of historical properties and interview of the city historian could be assigned to the planning commission. Moving the oversight of the commission for the arts from the Innovation and Economic Development Department to the library does not change the makeup or goals and priorities of the commission. The commission for the arts worked hard and created an independent and comprehensive strategic plan for Livermore Cultural Arts that was adopted in 2022. This work will continue through the library. The library culture. The Livermore Cultural Arts vision focuses more on arts programming, and the library currently has extensive cultural arts programming. Library staff also have experience with grants, which is a function of the commission. Converting the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, or LIAC, to a library activity removes the Brown Act requirements of this body. This would enable the body to meet more often in smaller groups, and it would speed up decision-making that is currently limited to monthly meetings. In addition, more youth could participate. Currently, when students contact the city about being on LIAC and there are no seats available, students are encouraged to attend the meetings as members of the public and provide public comment. This rarely occurs. If the body becomes an activity, more youth could be involved, and they could come in and work on a specific project of interest under the leadership of the new body. The liver, the library already has extensive youth programming, and this change would complement those programs. There are some minor recommended changes to the remaining body's rules of procedure. For the Airport Commission, it's recommended to increase the number of tenants allowed on the commission from two to three. Previously, the commission set the rental rates for the airport, so having a majority of tenants was a conflict of interest. The commission no longer sets the rental rates. The rates increase based on CPI. This change would allow for a larger pool of applicants for openings on the commission. And the most recent Airport Commission recruitment, the subcommittee could only fill one of the two vacancies because both applicants were tenants, and there's already a tenant on the commission. This change would have allowed both vacancies to have been filled. For the Human Services Commission, removing the duties related to determining what types of services to be provided at the multi-service center are recommended. Housing and Human Services staff manage the multi-service center and determine which organizations to rent to. For the Library Board of Trustees, it's recommended to remove the duties related to the library budget. Board members can make recommendations for programs at the library, but the library staff manage the budget. Recommended changes for all bodies include changing references from citizens forum to open forum to align with city council rules of procedure. And replace references to the city council goals and priorities to the new five-year strategic plan. Finally, having each body create a work plan as directed in the city council rules of procedure will help guide their activities each year to ensure activities are in line with the body's objectives. Advisory body liaisons plan to begin this process on creating work plans in January with oversight from the city clerk's office and input from advisory body members. The city values its volunteers and appreciates all the time and effort they put into our advisory. All, excuse me. And all the time and effort that is put in by our advisory body members. In front of you is a list of some of the volunteer opportunities available to residents. The first three opportunities, Livermore Community Service Day, Graffiti Fighters, and the Living Arroyos Program are in alignment with some of the duties of the Beautification Committee. Key to the city is an excellent opportunity for residents to learn about the inner workings of the city. For those interested in the police department, the community police academy is an option, and for those interested in the fire department activities, there's the CERT program. The Livermore Library has extensive volunteer opportunities. Also, there are other advisory bodies that residents can attend meetings for or apply to be on. The subcommittee is recommending that if a commission is sunset, the members be given priority placement on a new committee if qualified when openings occur. If council approves a recommendation, an ordinance would be brought back to council for approval, as well as a resolution amending the rules of procedure for the remaining bodies. If the council chooses to sunset the Historic Preservation Commission, a development code amendment would need to be heard by the planning commission. To update the development code, changing references from Historic Preservation Commission to Planning Commission. In addition to the ordinances and resolutions brought forth by council, brought forth to council, excuse me. Uh, staff in the City Council Subcommittee for Advisory Body Review recommend the city council review the subcommittee's recommendations regarding changes to city advisory bodies. And direct staff to bring back ordinances, amending the Livermore Municipal Code and the Development Code at future meetings. This concludes my presentation, and staff are available for questions.
Okay, um. Any immediate questions or show up in the public comment period? Okay, public comments?
The first speaker is Tanya Parent Panarello, followed by Jeff Caskey, followed by Greg Scott.
Hi, I'm Tanya Panarello, a longtime resident of Livermore and a member of the Beautification Committee since November of 2022. Though I haven't served long on the Beautification Committee, I grew up in Livermore. I've also lived in Dublin, downtown Walnut Creek, and central Florida, so I think I have a pretty unique perspective I can add, not just to the committee but also the city. Um, my husband, a Navy veteran, agreed that Livermore was the ideal place to raise our two boys, now young men who live, work, and attend school in Livermore. So we also look to preserving the beauty of Livermore for future generations. I applied to serve on the Beautification Committee because I wanted to give back to my community. I care about my hometown and sincerely believe our community, our committee serves an important purpose. Inspiring and encouraging our fellow residents to continually improve our city aesthetically and environmentally. Especially important is the education we provide to the elementary school students through Arbor Day-related outreach. I'd like to expand that outreach to all grade levels with age-appropriate curriculum, especially with respect to climate change. We serve on this committee because we care about creating a beautiful, welcoming place for residents and visitors alike. These advisory committees ideally represent a mix of Livermore residents. City council and staff should appreciate and maximize this valuable form of community input to constantly better our hometown. Continually striving to improve Livermore should be a team effort with all working together in transparency and cohesion. If you truly value the functions that advisory committees serve, why have you kept us in the dark for the past six plus months? Every time we asked about recruiting new committee members, we were told basically nothing, except that our committees were still under review. When we finally received updates, we were given only a few days to respond to the recommendation to sunset the Beautification Committee, a committee that has been around for almost 60 years. Consider this, the Beautification Committee not only serves an aesthetic function, but also addresses concerns about safety and climate. We'd like to preserve as many trees as possible, not only for the sake of beautification, but for preventative maintenance and to support a healthier environment for all. In the process of losing three committee members in less than six months, we have reviewed and revised our subcommittees to remain relevant to more appropriately serve our community. There's so much potential for what we can do. It is a huge mistake to sunset the Beautification Committee. At the very least, please consider alternatives like maybe combining beautification with the arts or planning advisory boards. And in the future, please, a bit more transparency in your dealings with the advisory boards would be much appreciated. And P.S., it would be a huge mistake to sunset the Historic Preservation Commission as well. I mean, how can you forge ahead without knowing where you've been? Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Caskey, followed by Greg Scott, followed by Karen Jefferson.
Good evening. I encourage you to support the city's Historic Preservation Commission and the Beautification Commission as well. I'm a little shocked that we're having this conversation. I've worked with some of you on the council and the staff. Protecting and celebrating Livermore's heritage. Teaching the historic roots of this city to newcomers and next generation, preserving the character-defining features of our town to reflect the residents' appreciation for its history. The staff report notes that the number of properties required to go through the historic review process was recently reduced from 14,000 to 290. That's misleading. The larger number are the older tract homes, and their applications were handled administratively as part of the regular planning process and never saw HPC review. HPC activities did not notably change. In my eight years on HPC, we may have reviewed one tract home the whole time. The workload has not changed, and in fact, HPC should be meeting. You may be aware of some notable recent planning missteps due to the lack of HPC review. The plan to absorb HPC into Planning Commission is also misguided. The staff report acknowledges that planning commissioners are not subject matter experts in local history, saying that they'll be given some training to prepare them for historic reviews. So there will be historic reviews. But instead of having them done by commissioners chosen by the council for their heritage expertise. They'll be done by planning commissioners after some yet-to-be-identified training. Has anybody seen this training? Has it been reviewed by anyone? Does it exist? HPC and the Beautification Commission are commissions where the public is honored for doing good things. Exceptional properties are offered plaques. Commissioners often congratulate applicants for their thoughtful approach and sometimes offer additional support. It's a very positive relationship between the residents and the city that occurs in both of those commissions. Unlike the Planning Commission, those commissioners, these commissioners are volunteers. They're not paid city employees. It creates a special relationship with the city. Let's not pretend that's the same thing as showing up for Volunteer Day, which is a very nice thing to do, and I'm glad that we do it, but that's not the same as having these commissions. I urge you not to signal the end of council's interest in protecting Livermore's history and community character. Please do not vote to request the ordinance killing off these commissions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Karen Jefferson, followed by Sandra Lorman.
Greg Scott. What you need is more input, not less input. I don't understand why you would sunset these committees um, and limit these committees, like. Not giving jurisdiction to the multi-services center of the Human Services Commission. It doesn't make any sense to me. Um, you, you've got too little input as it is. For example, you don't want me, who's been homeless on the Human Services Commission. Well, you don't get certain things like that. And I'll give you an example that two of you attended the Tri Valley Nonprofit Associate Alliance, Anti-Poverty Coalition. And there was a study presented there by Dr. Moore, big study uh. Uh, funded by Beniot. Um, he's the CEO of Salesforce and with UCSF. Huge study, 3,200 survey, amazing. In that study, if you ever looked at it, explain to me the methamphetamine to fentanyl ratios. You can ask the police, you can ask your technical staff, ask them. And I think you could stare at it all day, and you won't know what's wrong there. Why, when that survey was done for that time period on that ratio, why is that? Because you don't have the cultural context in your life. Because you don't have the cultural context in your lives, which you can't blame yourselves. It's probably a good thing you weren't exposed to it, as I have been. But you, it doesn't stick out to you. You need more information, not less. You need these committees and these inputs in this community because you aren't going to see it. You don't have the experience, the exposure, the cultural context to see it. So I don't understand why you would be limiting yourself. It doesn't even make sense from a private enterprise standpoint. Look at artificial intelligence. It's going to open source. Meta-Facebook's going to open source. Mistral, the French company, its evaluation is seven times what it was six months ago. It's evaluated for twenty-two employees at two billion dollars. It is because it's going to open source. It can much faster and more openly develop a large language model. And you're going to limit yourself on community input and input? It doesn't make sense, which is why I'm so frustrated with your Human Services Commission, because who on that committee has been homeless? No, you don't know homelessness, so, and you're not getting the input you need. And now with all these other committees, you're going to limit yourself? It doesn't make sense to me.
The next speaker is Karen Jefferson, followed by Sandra Lorman, followed by Mary Perner.
To the mayor and council members, my name is Karen Jefferson, and I am a member of the Beautification Committee. And surprisingly, I, and unsurprisingly, I do not support the recommendation, recommendation to sunset the committee. As I mentioned in my written input for the council, I feel the advisory review of the Beautification Committee was poorly done. I certainly can understand the review of roles and responsibilities, but at no time during this process was our committee given the opportunity to discuss with city staff, the council Subcommittee, or our liaison what future roles we could have. In my written input, I have outlined several potential committee activities. It is one thing for city staff and the council Subcommittee to look at ten-year-old roles, find that few apply, and discuss with the committee what new roles the committee could fulfill, versus what really happened, which was look at the ten-year-old roles, find few apply, and recommend, and recommend sunsetting the committee. The staff report states that if the city council decides to continue the beautification awards and Arbor Day activities of the committee, the Subcommittee recommends staff reach out to current Beautification Committee members for future volunteer opportunities, such as Beautification Awards, Arbor Day, and Community Service Day. So after recommending the committee is not needing, needed, you ask for former committee members to volunteer to do some of the work of the committee that you just disbanded. In my opinion, this takes a bit of chutzpah. I also cannot emphasize enough how much I do not support the recommendation to sunset the Historic Preservation Commission. Yes, the commission hasn't met, but that isn't through the choice of the members. Does the city have the historical expertise commensurate with the HPC? Absolutely no. Placing historical review in planning meets economic development prevails over the preservation of our city's character and history. Citizen participation leads to more informed decision-making in city government and also adheres to the democratic principles that the U.S. was founded on. Advisory bodies are an important conduit for citizen input, perspective, and participation. I ask you that you not sunset the Beautification Committee and the HPC. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandra Lorman, followed by Mary Perner.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sandra Lormond. I am a member of the Endangered Beautification Committee, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about the proposed elimination of this committee. While it's certainly sensible to have periodic reviews of the roles and responsibilities of advisory committees, these reviews need to be done in a professional and a transparent way. I do not feel that this was the case concerning the Beautification Committee. Committee members were told nothing and not asked for input while the review was taking place over the spring and summer of this year. We were presented with recommendations on Wednesday, December sixth, and requested to provide input by December eighth. Citizen advisory committees provide an important way for the city government to obtain citizen input. There are a lot of smart, creative people in this town. They deserve to be heard. They pay the taxes that fund the programs, and they pay the city employees' salaries. I do not think the Beautification Committee should be disbanded for these reasons. There will be no avenue for citizen input concerning the horticultural beautification and development of Livermore. In this area, era of climate change, appropriate trees and landscaping are important. Committee members have creative ideas regarding funding, tree type priorities. We assessed the street medians for planting and repairs. We evaluated signage placed at city entrance points, and there were other projects that the committee undertook before I was ever a member. Arbor Day will no longer take place unless the city can recruit volunteers for the effort. The Beautification Committee planned this detailed and labor-intensive event, which reached over one thousand second graders in fourteen schools in Livermore, as well as the citizens, and this happens annually. The Citizen and Commercial Beautification Awards Program will cease unless the city can recruit volunteers to continue it. The institutional knowledge regarding both Arbor Day and Beautification Awards will be lost. Both of these programs provide much positive publicity and goodwill for the city. It's also being recommended that the Citizen Tree Appeals no longer be handled by the Beautification Committee and instead be outsourced to an independent third source. Since the city will be hiring and paying these, this third source, how independent will this opinion be? With these four points, what I ask you all to do is to think very hard before you kill this committee. I think we have done a lot of good. Democracy can be messy, but people need to be heard. Thank you.
The last speaker is Mary Perner.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff. My name is Mary Perner. I'm a thirty-six-year resident of Livermore, and I'm here in support of the Beautification Committee this evening. I am not knowledgeable about this committee, but I am a supporter of community involvement in the city and advice of the community to the people who are paid to help us and work with us. Right now, we have committees that have been around for decades. There's institutional knowledge in these committees, and by sunsetting them, we lose that knowledge. I am supportive of maintaining those committees. They have done great work with the Arbor Day, distributing a thousand bags of information to second graders in fourteen schools, beautification awards, awarding commercial and homeowners, putting up sign in Hanson Park Rose Garden, where there was no sign in the park created, which was created in nineteen sixty. And they evaluate city medians. There's so much more that could be done. I see work outside of City Hall trying to change the lawn structure and put in various plantings. This committee could work advising that kind of change and using native garden and water, low-water plantings. They, I'm acquainted with the people on the Beautification Committee, and I know they know their stuff. So I, I hope that the committees are maintained and that there is suitable gratitude for their work, the gratitude that manifests itself in maintaining the committees. Democracy, as was just said, can be messy, but I think it beats bureaucracy. Thank you.
That completes public comment.
Going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. What I'd like to do first is hear from the Subcommittee. And where the, that was Councilmember Branning and Vice Mayor Kik. So you've seen the final report, and you worked at the beginning of this. What are your thoughts?
Thank you. So this was a long process getting here, and I want to start with a few different thoughts. So if I jump around a little, I apologize. But first of all, I want to just really make sure that everyone understands I deeply, deeply appreciate the commissions, the commissioners, everyone who volunteers their time, everyone who is willing to serve on these commissions. I got my start in Livermore politics, as it were, serving on the Human Services Commission, so I've been there on both sides of this at this point. I don't want people to conflate the different ideas that were being conflated up here. And what we're talking about up here is a formalized commission and the structure involved around that, including the limitations and requirements of maintaining a commission, whether or not that is worth the amount of staff time for the output that the commission has. I am a little bit insulted to hear that people think that my views on whether something should be a commission or not relate to my views on whether or not this is something that is a priority to the city. We don't have a bike ped commission. We don't have an environmental review commission. There are many, many things that are vitally important that are huge priorities to the city that we don't have commissions for. However, we have other ways of maintaining our values and maintaining the things that are important to us. So when we're looking at the commissions, the Beautification and Historic Commission serve a function that is vitally important to the city. They enhance our values. They help us move those forwards. However, the structure of the commission was not helping them accomplish those goals. And so when we spoke with staff, we were asked, does this have more, does this serve more good than the cost? Is there another way to accomplish this? And so in our conversations, one of the big things that came up was, are there other ways that we can continue along with these values? For beautification, I know for sure, because I have seen all of the members of the Beautification Commission out performing volunteer activities outside of the commission, that you are involved deeply with the community, and these are values that are important to you. I hope that you don't think it's chutzpah to ask you to continue to be involved when we simply are saying you don't need to maintain a monthly meeting that requires a tremendous amount of staff time. What we're looking for is for you to continue your involvement and hopefully have opportunities to be even more involved going forward. So I'd like to ask one question to staff, which is that along with this conversation, although not directly related to the advisory body review, what is the city doing in hopes that we can increase the ability for people to volunteer with the city?
Councilmember Branning and the members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marasheva. We are working on a number of opportunities for our community to be more involved. We're looking to have a year-round volunteer program that will start with litter pickup as well as graffiti fighting, and there will be additional opportunities. Again, it all comes down to staff. We don't have a citywide volunteer coordinator, but there will be additional opportunities for the public to be involved, starting in early of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. So my opinion from the Subcommittee, and I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor, is that the recommendations make sense because it allows the staff to continue working on these projects while enhancing the ability for others to be involved. Where a commission format is unfortunately restrictive in what it actually does, I don't think that the benefits of the commission outweigh the costs.
I'm going to start with a couple questions. What I am hearing is a lack of understanding on terms and definitions, and so I want to clarify some of those. Jason, can you please clarify what a Brown Act body is?
So Brown Act body applies to any advisory body that is created or formed by the city council. It can actually include nonprofits that are created by the city council and funded by the city council. And if, once those bodies are created, they need to adhere to the requirements imposed by the Brown Act, which require the preparation of a noticed agenda prior to any more, a majority of the members gathering at one point in time to hear or make decisions. So once it's a Brown Act body, you're required to have an agenda, and staff is what prepares those.
Okay, so in my understanding, Brown Act bodies take staff time to comply with state law?
Yes, so the city is the one who provides those resources to help prepare those agendas for that advisory body.
Other volunteer opportunities that do not have to follow Brown Act body rules, do not have to prepare those kinds of materials, does not take, need to take that staff time in order to support city functions and activities?
That'd be correct. There may be other needs, but it's not, does not require a noticed agenda or the Brown Act, or Brown Act compliance.
Brown Act compliance also requires that there is a quorum of individuals present to hold the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. In order for the advisory body to take action, it needs to have a quorum present.
So I'm going to focus actually my conversation and comments on LAAC, the Livermore Youth Advisory Committee. Because one of the reasons I think it's so valuable that it's moving to a library group is because the restrictions placed on LAAC through the Brown Act meant that so often, these young people didn't actually get to meet. If someone didn't show up on time, then, you know, we have our staff calling parents to say, can you pick your kid up? They can't meet because we don't meet quorum. And that's disappointing for students. That's disappointing for staff. And it does limit opportunity. In addition, with these bodies, we have a limited amount of the number of people that can participate. You can have whatever the number that is predetermined, five, seven, allowed on each body. A non-Brown Act volunteer body has unlimited opportunity for people to step in and support and hold leadership roles. So I feel as if there may be a misunderstanding in the intent of this. The limitations of Brown Act bodies take staff time, staff money, and limit actual involvement of community members, which is why LAAC moving to the library was kind of just an obvious move, and I think students are excited about that. I feel strongly that the the actual tasks of the two commissions that we are recommending to sunset fit nicely in other areas of our community, whether it be having beautification be a focus area or subcommittee of some sort in the Arts Commission, which is something we had discussed in our Subcommittee meeting. If you're going to have a Brown Act body, it might as well do as much as it possibly can, considering the time constraints, the state regulation constraints. Similarly, with the Historic Preservation Body, we have the ability to edit the role of Planning Commission. In addition, we have never, well, I can't say never because I wasn't been, I haven't been here forever. I think that we do a the community does a great job of coming and telling us how they feel about things. So in decisions of historic buildings, I have not seen a So in decisions of historic buildings, I, I have not seen a lack of participation of individuals letting us know that they are concerned. I am not actually worried about our history being lost. I think there was a, there was a, a comment that says that we will, we will lose institutional knowledge. But the committees change fairly often. The, the constant is staff and our records. So because it was a Brown Act body, nothing is lost because all of those, all of those things are in record. So I don't want that to be a fear. I also, you know, we have an, an interesting city in that we do not manage our parks district as a part of the city government. We have a separate body for that. And some of these activities feel to me like they should be the responsibility of the other governmental body in our, our community, which is LARPD. And trees in our parks, that kind of beautification is not in our jurisdiction. And that maybe there's an opportunity for LARPD to step up. I've already talked to our city manager about that, about making that connection. In addition, the Arbor Day, working with a thousand students, that is within the purview of our school district. Again, it's not that the city doesn't think these things are important, but with limited time and resources, I think we have to be very careful about how we choose to spend our time and money, given that there are other organizations that have the capacity and/or better skillset than us to deal with students than the city does. I think the school board could absolutely step up in that capacity and that I, I believe our staff has the relationships to have those conversations. So again, those were, that's why I agreed with these, these recommendations. Again, I think that there are some hurt feelings, but I would, I would like to be very very clear that recommendations of sunsetting a, a Brown Act body is not dismissing the importance or value of those individuals who have participated. And something that I want to ensure that we add to our review of all of these bodies is that we understand that all committee members are appointed at the pleasure of the council with the expectation that they are following the rules of procedure, which I would like to add a provision to about their respect for staff. So I am not happy with some of the reports from staff about how some of our committee members have been treating our staff. And so I want to make sure that whatever bodies do stick around, that all of the individuals who are unpaid volunteers are giving the utmost respect to the paid staff who are here to make our city run. So that's just a, a side note that I wanted to make very clear.
Thank you. Councilmember Carling.
So some thank yous to the folks that are here to speak in support of beautification and HPC. And thanks to my colleagues up here, councilmember Branding and the vice mayor. I'll start by saying I disagree with sunsetting beautification and HPC. I appreciate the vice mayor's conversation about LAAC. To me, that makes sense. I wasn't, I didn't quite understand the subtleties there, or maybe it's not so subtle, but I appreciate her focusing on that at the beginning. And I think to not disappoint the kids that want to participate in, in being able to include others, I think it makes some sense to move LAAC to the library. But I disagree with sunsetting beautification and HPC. If it really is an issue of cost to the staff, maybe there's other ways that we can, we can fulfill the need of considering that. I mean, HPC hasn't even met in a year. So I'm not sure how much staff time has been spent on HPC. I know that beautification means monthly. Maybe that doesn't need to meet so often, but I think they do offer service. I do not think asking the school board to take on Arbor Day is a reasonable thing to do. I think we have some history on that and it's been something that we've done for many, many years. And I think that's appropriate for the city. I also think the beautification awards is something that are important to this community. And I agree with Mr. Scott. We need more input, not less. And I think the folks that volunteer for those committees offer a valuable service to this community. So I, I disagree with sunsetting beautification and HPC.
Okay. There was a tremendous amount of work that was put into this and the vice mayor and councilmember Branding, thank you so much for the, for the work and recognize the tremendous work that all of the commissioners put in. I started out as, as a commissioner on, I was a founding member of the Commission for the Arts. And what's interesting is the Commission for the Arts has, has already moved three, three times. Yeah. We started out in economic development, moved over to human services, moved back to the economic development, and now they're being proposed to move over to the library. I also agree with, with councilmember Carling and Mr. Scott. I think that these are opportunities where the community has the chance to, to, to talk to the, to the city. It's, it's an opportunity to provide input and we want more input, not less. With respect to the Commission for the Arts, as Mitch Landry, who is the mayor of New Orleans, said, he says, the arts are an economic engine. For New Orleans, that was a $500 million economic engine that lifted them out of the devastation of this hurricane Katrina. I know that now LAA, but LV PAC, LVA, I'm sorry, LVA used to be LV, LV PAC did a study on the economic impact of the arts. And I still very much believe in that. And I understand that this, a lot of this comes down to concern over staff time, staff resources, and I certainly understand that as well. But I think that having the opportunity to get the additional input, question for staff. The SBC building is being redone. So did the HPC have input before the modifications are being made?
We're, we're trying to recollect. I do not believe the HPC had input because the portion of the building being modified is not historic. It's an, it's a much later add-on.
But that, that, that is a historic building. I mean, there was a lot of, like I said, I went by the, pardon me? HPC? But that was many years ago, but it, I'm trying to help you here, Jeff. But so, you know, my concern is that, because I drove by the, the roof's off. And that was kind of interesting. But yeah, so there's some significant changes being made to the building. And as was pointed out by one of the letters that I received, there were modifications made to a building on Trevano. And I know the Trevano has been a real thorn in our side for, for years. But that is a historic district and I understand there were modifications that were made without HPC oversight. And those are, those are concerns because we value our history and we value that that part of us. And I think that there really is a, a value to having people on on historic preservation. And I'm somewhat taken aback with the, the comment that, well, the members of the HPC can fight it out for a city historian. And it's like, ooh, that's kind of harsh. So I, I think that, that they, they do provide a, a real service because there, there is a an appreciation and, and love of history. And I think that that's, that's a requirement as well. And this is not putting anything against staff because I certainly appreciate the, the value and the, the expertise that staff brings into this. But there's, there's having that, that additional input. I have a, a well-used copy of Livermore by Ann Holman. That, you know, I frequently go back to that, looking at the, the history of Livermore. But I, I see real value in the Commission for the Arts. And this idea of, of, well, we've done all the art. Most of the stuff we're doing now is, is programming and the library is really good at programming. And I understand that, but, but I look at the funding source for the Commission for the Arts and a lot of that is one-time money coming in as part of our development fee, the, the art development fee, which is a remarkable thing that we have here. But, but that's, that's one-time money. And I think that's where it's valuable to go into public art. And, you know, we've got more murals, we've got public art in the downtown and actually Shay Holmes did a wonderful art walk as part of their programs. And so as part of their, their, their art fee, development contribution. So I see, if, if we start moving toward using this one-time money for programming, eventually that programming is going to go away and unless the city makes that up. So I, I yeah, transitioning that into, into strictly programming. I mean, the library does great programming. They really, really do. And I certainly appreciate the great work that the library does. But I see the real value in the Commission for the Arts and the arts being that economic engine. We had that wonderful pop-up in the downtown. I've been looking for another one of those and we never had another one. But what a great thing that was. And it brought all sorts of people into the downtown.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Based on what you're saying.
Am I rambling?
No, 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 no. There's, I think you're making the suggestion that there would be, it would be only programming. That was not what I got from staff. That is not what I got at all from the, from the messaging. Can you clarify if the arts commission moving would take away those one-time public art installations or if it would still include that in addition to better support for programming?
Okay. It says in the staff report, given this strategic plan is more focused on programs instead of physical pieces, the library would be the ideal department to manage advisory body moving forward so that the focus would be on programs and not pieces.
Sure. I, what I'm saying is that I think that because I was in many conversations, I have more information that maybe wasn't written down very well in the staff report. So that's what I want to clarify from staff.
Mayor and vice mayor, I will start then if necessary, our director of innovation, economic development, Brandon can also jump in. The city council approved a new cultural art strategic plan not too long ago. And that strategic plan that was developed with the input of the cultural arts commission does make a transition from physical art to more programming. We would not go away from physical art completely, but there was an effort through that work to provide more programming with the commission's input and guidance. And that strategic plan was based on not only conversations with the cultural arts commission, but also the community. The community was looking for more programming, perhaps not less art, but more programming. We were looking, Mr. Mayor, to bring back changes to the cultural arts program that establishes the fee to allow for that flexibility between physical art and programming in alignment with the strategic plan.
One more follow-up question. The follow-up question there is in addition, the library was chosen because it has experience managing and distributing grants, which is another part of that. Being under economic development doesn't actually mean that we're not going to be able to do grants anymore because the library is absolutely able to serve that function. Is that correct?
That is correct, the vice mayor. And again, as staff has had several discussions internally and just felt that there was a lot more connection with that expanded role for the cultural arts commission to focus on additional programming. There was a lot more connection between that new role and what the library is doing with regards to cultural programming, family programming and so on. So that was the rationale.
And, and that's another, as, as the vice mayor pointed out, when she was talking about perhaps LARPD would be better focused on, on Arbor Day. Well, that's one of the other things is other organizations that deal with, with recreation also do the arts. LARPD is somewhat different in that they don't really have an art focus. Hayward Area Recreation Park District, they have an art gallery, they have the Adobe Art Gallery, they've got the the Doug Morrison Theater. So they run the theater program. So a lot of those art programs are run out of the, the recreation department. And so I think we're sort of trying to make up some of that loss. That's why we've got the arts commission because we believe that the arts are extraordinarily important in our community and that they need a, they, they, they need that focus.
And just to, I, I just, I'm hearing things that I'm, I'm think are confusing. So the arts commission isn't going away. It's going from management from under Brandon over to the library. That's the only difference. I just want to be clear. So they're not changed, it's not gone. It's just a different staff liaison.
Right. But I think there's a missed opportunity because I see the arts as an economic engine. And that not, it's not just recreation. I think it's something more fundamental in our, in our community that this is, it really is part of our quality of life. And that there's an opportunity where it does become a, a driver for the economy. So check my notes here. Yeah. So I think that my, when I looked at this, I, I was, I was surprised because I think maybe what this tells us is that we've got a lot of people that want to help out. And to suggest that, well, we'll dissolve the commission, but then can you help us out? You know, okay. You're already, you're already volunteers. You're already here helping us. And I sincerely, sincerely appreciate that. When I started the graffiti fighters, we, I think we got, last count was 35 graffiti fighters that are out there cleaning up graffiti. I think that's really cool. We don't have a, a commission for that, but we got a bunch of, of people out there doing it. I think another thing with the, the, I'm sorry if I'm jumping around here, but looking at the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, this, this opportunity of, as was, was pointed out, you'd be, there'd be more youth and they could achieve, they, they could assume leadership roles. There's no organization to assume a leadership role. When we've got the, the LAAC, we have the, the chair of the layout committee, the vice chair, and there, there, there are subcommittees there. They've done amazing work. As I said, they had this, this wonderful program when I started the anti-bullying crusade and the, the anti-vaping that the, I attended the, the peer groups in the high schools where it was, it was members of the LAAC that were presenting the programs on the anti-vaping. And that later translated to legislation here and ordinances here at the city council to, to improve the quality of life in the community. So it's, it's having those leadership opportunities. And if that commission goes away, so go the leadership opportunities. And I think that I'm, I'm on a lot of committees and, and sometimes what happens is they will actually send out an email saying, are you going to be at the meeting? Because we may not have a quorum. And if we don't have a quorum, then we reschedule the meeting. So there may be ways to work around that. I was surprised to see that the SATs conflict with this because I thought the SATs went away. But I understand there's a lot of different things that get in the way of, of high school students and, and middle school students. But I think there's ways to, to get around that.
Can we clarify with Debbie? How did the youth feel about moving to the library? Were they excited or disappointed? About moving to a non-Brown Act body? Were they excited or disappointed?
Vice mayor, they, they were excited because they could do more things quicker. And then as far as the leadership role, mayor, we talked about, they have a lot of subcommittees. For example, their world, World Fair event.
Right.
And the discussion. And the discussion Monday night was instead of the subcommittee doing all the work, the subcommittee could lead additional youth volunteers for an activity like that. That where those students could actually come and participate in the discussion instead of just providing three-minute public comment. So they want to, they still want to feel very important to the city, but they were excited to find out that they could do things a little easier. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I think there was an assumption that having that official title was somehow more important to teenagers, but I think the reality is having those constraints just isn't realistic for eleven to twenty-one-year-olds. And calling people from beautification and saying, can you show up to make sure we make quorum is a lot more reasonable than calling parents of kids to say, if you don't come, you don't make quorum when, you know, they've got school and sports and all these other things going on. I just don't think it's realistic to to assume that they're not coming out of lack of commitment other than lack of physical hours in their day. Because they're kids.
I find that I find it interesting that that they've, that the the youth favor the dissolving of the commission.
It's not, but it's not dissolving. It's just no longer a Brown Act body. That's what I'm
It's no longer a commission.
The functions of the group remain. Is that correct? The the goal of creating opportunities for youth to work together to improve our community remains. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There is no longer a chair of the commission.
Some people don't care about
They would still have a leadership group, so.
Okay, help me on that one.
Yes. So it it would still be a group of students that would still have a form form of leadership, a chair, a vice chair, that kind of thing. They still would have that. They just would have it under the library and wouldn't be a Brown Act body. So they'd be called something different. But they would still meet and
What would we call them?
One of the thoughts that the liaison suggested was a youth council instead of a youth commission or youth advisory body.
Okay. I like that.
So it'd be like the Livermore Youth Council, which is not
Okay, so the
There's no confusion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That I can get behind. Yeah. Councilmember Brandon.
Yeah, so I hear what both Councilmember Carrington and Mayor Marshawn, what you're saying about the commissions. And I think this reflects some changes in thinking that might be a little bit different. And it's the idea of structure versus opportunity. And so having a beautification committee provides structure. Having a historic preservation committee provides structure. The youth advisory commission being a Brown Act commission is structured. There is a very hierarchical system involved. There is very much legal technical ramifications to being a commission. One of the things that Vice Mayor Kik and I, as well as staff, were very, very interested is opportunity. And so looking at a commission in a Brown Act body is a limiting factor in many ways. The head nods from the audience imply to me the people here also believe that a Brown Act body in some way is magical. And the truth of the matter is, if someone has a full-time job and children and is or is going to school or is trying to provide for others, the structure of a Brown Act commission is very difficult. I'm able to serve on City Council because I don't have kids. Because I have a job that's relatively flexible. And we want people to have opportunities to be able to speak up and be involved. I haven't heard anything in the opposition that was relative of the actions and activities involved and how changing the commission's structure would affect the ability for those actions to be enacted. And so when the Vice Mayor and I were discussing this with staff, a large focus of what we discussed was making sure that everything that we're currently doing could continue to be done and could continue to be done well. If we're not Brown Act bodies for these things, for beautification, historic commission and for the youth, it provides other people the opportunity to be involved. I disagree fundamentally that this is trying to limit people's involvement. I think this makes flexibility a priority versus structure. And so that was one of the major considerations. I understand that it's difficult, especially when people come out and say this is very important. I don't like necessarily that we're, you know, dissolving commissions. It feels bad to me. I don't like saying that to people. I really appreciate what the commissions have done. I consider some of the commissioners that we're talking to now friends of mine. And still I think that that opportunity outweighs the structure.
I I think it would be important to to take a look at the traditional makeup of our committees and commissions historically. I think we can say that in general, there is an age differential between who tends to be able to serve and who tends to not be able to be to serve. I think that does have to do with the fact of evening commitments with kids and all these other things and not wanting to be that person that can't show up and make quorum not happen. I also think that there is it this this assumption may be completely untrue, but I I think your surprise at the youth being excited about moving is is maybe an idea about a shift in generational ideas about structure and hierarchy. And the idea that just more people being involved is better than someone having a certain title. And so I I think that especially for the for the LAAC, I mean, they are not messing with the recommendation there is is super important to me. I can kind of read the tea leaves here about Historic Preservation Committee and Beautification Commission. And just based on the fact that it's nine fifteen and I have a feeling we're going to end up at two-two, I would like to suggest that we vote on every recommendation except for historic commission and beautification so that we can continue to have a conversation and a fifth. But I'm not sure that us talking in circles is actually going to get us to a different vote on anything for historic preservation and beautification. Any thoughts on?
So are you making a motion?
Well, I get, sure. I I guess I move stack for recommendation on every item except for beautification and historic preservation, which will be continued at a later date. Do I have a second?
Let's see, it dies for lack of a second.
Oh, all right.
Nice try.
I tried, I tried to get it wrong.
I think structure is exactly what's needed in these. So I guess I disagree with my colleague. I think that's very important.
Well, it provides a time and a place to comment.
Exactly.
If you have, if you've got a a group of volunteers that show up at the library on different days of the week, that isn't going to get you anywhere. If if you have a council that doesn't have a specific time or place to meet.
I don't think that's the true, I think those are false equivalencies, though. We're not saying that they don't have a time or place to meet. We're saying they're not bound by the Brown Act. That's all. They would have a time and a place to meet. They would have a staff liaison. All of those things are true.
So how does this save any time?
We're not, some of these aren't about saving staff time necessarily. They are about making opportunity available to more than retired wealthy people. I mean, I'm I'm a little bit frustrated and irritated. But I, you know, I would like to again, if I I don't see our conversation moving anywhere, if I don't have a second for that, can we just vote? Because I have a feeling we're going to end it two-two and we're going to have to continue this conversation.
It's two-two. It just stays the way it is. Right?
Yes.
So nothing changes.
Right.
So I would say then that I would like everyone to be on the record. So first motion, I'd like to move the entirety of staff recommendations.
My second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Brandon, seconded by Vice Mayor Kik to accept staff recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed? No, no, it'd be no.
No. No.
All opposed?
No.
No, there you go. Okay.
Second motion?
Okay.
I'd like to move the items for LAAC and the Commission for the Arts. In those two sections.
None of the other recommendations about like wording?
As well. I'll move all of the recommendations for the wording, LAAC, Commission for the Arts, excluding Historic Commission, Historic and Beautification.
Okay, I second that.
Okay, so what is different about that motion?
Than my original motion?
No, than than Councilmember Brandon's original motion.
The original one with sunset. The original motion sunsets, beautification and historic preservation commission. This one does not.
It just adjusts the other.
It adjusts the wording.
Adjust the wording for LAAC?
For LAAC, for the art. Oh, gosh.
There are changes to the Airport Commission.
Airport Commission, the Human Services Commission, the Library Board of Trustees, Rules and Procedures.
So but the
Rules and Procedures, the Planning Commission, Rules and Procedures. So it makes all of the other adjustments except for the two sunsetting.
Okay, so we would, so it's for, it approves the language for the LAAC, the Art Commission and all the other ones. It pulls out the beautification and NHPC.
Yes. To be more specific, to make sure it's consistent with everyone, pulling up the sunsetting recommendation for them, but still updating the language involved such as open forum versus citizens forum, things like that. The language changes to the rules and procedures, but not sunsetting the two commissions.
I had a question for the the library, unfortunately, but what's their bandwidth? I mean, that's dumping a lot of a lot of stuff onto onto the library because the library is already pretty busy. And I hear complaints that they want additional resources placed around the city and not everything being focused just at the main library.
Mr. Mayor, we are working on a plan to potentially increase one of the administrative positions at the library to help with this new commission, a new-to-them commission. We have been having these discussions with the library director and staff for a few months, so there will be capacity and more capacity than the Small Department of Innovation and Economic Development. So the library department will make it work.
Again, I think that's a it's a great missed opportunity for for the arts as an economic engine. I think that that's in 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 putting the the Youth Advisory Commission and the Commission for Arts, that's a significant amount of that's a lot of additional resources that'll be required. And as I said, I hear from people that want other things from the library and not not more more programming. They want additional resources for, you know, like the Springtown Library, that people want additional time open for there.
Was was the recommendation that was given to staff, was that run by library staff and economic development?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that recommendation has been discussed for the last few months between innovation, economic development and the library. And it was pursuant to the change that occurred with cultural arts around the strategic plan. So when that strategic plan with more focus on programming was approved, we started having discussions between economic development and the library.
Okay, so I would like to encourage us to believe staff when they say that this is their recommendation. Not that they didn't check with them.
Sure, but we can have a different point of view. I also am worried about, I mean, the Airport Commission wasn't brought up. And I've heard complaints about having too many pilots. And that's what your suggestion is. I'm not sure I agree with that.
Actually, Councilmember, it's increasing the number of tenants.
Understand that, but oh. But to take your example, there would have been two pilots. Because you said, right?
Was it two two tenants that applied?
Two pilots that applied.
They were two, but they were tenants. And that's why they couldn't take both of them.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I've heard concerns from the community that they don't want that many tenants or pilots on the commission.
Did anybody other than those two tenants apply?
No.
Yeah.
So just to check, while we also have a motion on the table, but was there a reason we formed a subcommittee?
Yes, you suggested it.
I did. And we agreed it was a good idea. And I believe now you're suggesting that every recommendation from it, including the ones from us spending a few months working on it and from staff are not worth it. So we have a motion on the table.
Excuse me, I thought the LAAC one was fine.
So we do have a motion on the table.
Okay, so you had a motion on the table for not sunsetting historic preservation and the human service, the beautification.
But moving all other staff recommendations.
And that's LAAC art. Okay, then we'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, there we go.
We move on.
So that impasse, that it doesn't pass. Lot of work greatly appreciated. Is there? All right. Let me try one more here. I will agree. So we will keep HPC. We will keep the Beautification Commission. And I would be willing to move the LAAC to the library. All of the other recommendations. Moving art to the library, I'm sorry. Keeping the Art Commission in economic development and approving the rest of the language.
Do you think it's appropriate to maybe ask for economic developments? Thought on that?
Maybe we need to put more resources into economic development.
Okay, yeah, sure. I just don't know that that is.
That's our job.
Going to happen. But but, okay, I have a question for staff then. If we decide to keep arts under economic development, will we get more staff in economic development, like the staff that you have discussed increasing in the library?
Vice Mayor, we could certainly contemplate that during the next budget. The budget is currently balanced. I would have to pull a position from another department to give it to economic development. But certainly when we discuss our next annual budget, we could, and we, as a matter of fact, discussed giving specialized position to support cultural arts to a department, not knowing where this discussion would go. That position, however, is not likely to be available. That position, however, is not likely to be available until a couple of years from now, which is given where we are in the budget. But those are the discussions that we can be and will be having the next time we review our budget.
Okay, I'll be straight up and ask Brandon. Okay, help me here. You have a phenomenal department. You're, we're doing great things.
Thank you.
Well, and thank you. Do you see the arts as an economic engine that we can use? Or do you do you think that that would be a better, better, better staff in the library?
So this recommendation is an outgrowth of the Cultural Arts Framework Creative Livermore, in which the vast majority of the public input on what the community desires for arts investments is in programming and specifically youth and family programming. And the library, I think, is the greatest distribution mechanism that we have for reaching youth and family, because it's the business that they're in constantly. And they also already have a significant body of arts and culture programming that they're involved in through crafts and multicultural activities and a whole number of things. I, I think conceptually, the arts can be a great economic engine. I think that the investments required to achieve that kind of outcome from art spending at the municipal level are likely higher than we are making today. To your point about New Orleans, New Orleans and, and the former mayor obviously has something of a different arts profile in terms of what they're doing at the city level. And so I think our intention was to have more intersection between public art offerings in the community and the staff that is more accustomed to that kind of program development and implementation. And with the art, the Arts Alcove already being present at the library, it seemed like there was some consistency and overlap in that. So to answer your question directly, yes, I do think that arts can be an important component of an economic development strategy. And I also don't believe that if it were to move to the library, that my department, the Innovation Economic Development Department, would stop pursuing arts and culture as a potential means of tourism and visitation. It's just that the core business of the Art Commission, which is public art acquisition, installation, and maintenance, grants administration, and program development would be done under a different departmental structure. I hope that was helpful.
I'll hold you to that.
Okay.
I'll hold you to that. Yes, yeah, as you know, the arts are extremely dear to me.
Absolutely.
And.
To that point, Mayor, one of the recommendations that came out of the Creative Livermore framework was this emphasis on a signature annual event that was rooted in the context of the community. I think that's something we still would want to pursue through my department because of the emphasis on tourism and visitation. We partnered with Visit Tri Valley on their cultural, cultural heritage and, and asset-based tourism. So it's something we're very interested in still. It's more that the commission and its work would transition, not that all arts would leave the Innovation Economic Development Department.
Okay. Okay, with that, understanding that we're not going to lose the, the drive behind the arts, we're not going to and I will take the city clerk at their, their word that the kids are excited about becoming a a council. And I, it's just still, it, you have a, a time and a place where these, these events take place. Okay. I will I'll make a motion to preserve the HPC, preserve the Beautification Commission, and the other language for the other rules of procedure. And that we would follow the staff recommendation for the Art Commission and for LAAC, because unfortunately, we have allowed LAAC, I believe, to languish. And we really need. We'll give this a try. I mean, I think the, the LAAC has done great things. I think we have all these great volunteers that want to do great things. And I think sometimes we just don't know how to utilize that energy. And I'll be willing to try something else. Hopefully we'll make that work, but preserve HPC, the Beautification Commission, and. I, I will, I will recommend the, the language for the airport, the Art Commission, which is all of the other ones. This is why democracy works. You guys, you know, we're seeing sausage being made right here. So with that, and in hearing from the experts that we depend upon, and I'll, we will revisit this. But I will, we'll keep Historic Preservation, we'll keep the Beautification Committee. Second.
I would suggest.
Yes.
We have had no discussion on the airport.
Oh, I, I was, I was good with the airport.
Okay, I'm not.
What, what, what are your concern?
My concern is, is that just be, we ought not, we ought to have a makeup of people on the Airport Commission that represent the, the community writ large and not overly pilots or tenants on the commission, which is kind of where we were headed. And at least the folks that I've spoken with have been very, very concerned that it's overly populated by people that are pilots or tenants. And I don't think that's an appropriate mix for this community. I mean, getting back to this business about lead in the fuel, my gosh, I mean, if it's overly populated with pilots and tenants, you know, they're going to, they're the people that buy fuel.
Yeah.
And so I, you know, I, I don't think, just because we had two people and we could only pick one because they were duplicates, and yet we had two openings, I don't think that's a good enough reason, I guess. So I'm fine with it, except I'd like to have, maybe we could postpone the airport to.
So what, what if we pull the airport out?
Fine.
And so
Then I would agree.
We pull out the HPC, the, the Beautification Committee and the airport.
Right.
Staff clear on that? Okay. Okay, I will so move.
Second. And just for clarity, it's the other language changes are included in there.
Yes. Under protest, but that's.
Question, question.
Yeah.
The airport language other than the tenant language? Because we had that other language in there as well. So is it all the language related to the airport or just the tenant issue? For you.
What other language was there?
Just changing it from like Citizens Forum, the public forum?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just, yes.
Okay.
It's the population of the community. Yes.
Okay, so all the other language changes except the the makeup of the, the commission.
Right.
So, so to be clear, like, I think it is moving staff recommendations excluding the sunsetting of the two commission committees and removing the change from three tenants to two, keeping it at two.
Yes.
All other changes approved.
Yes.
Okay, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're almost there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that is my motion, has been made, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Staff is clear on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, seconded by us saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We got there. All right. All right, very good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Great discussion. This is, this was, this was not easy. This was difficult. This one hurt me, but, but thank you so much. So moving on to.
Excuse me, Mayor? I'm sorry. Um, would you like to direct staff to bring back revised objectives for HPC and Beautification, since they're outdated?
Yes.
Please, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please. Okay, moving on to.
Sorry, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Under Brown Act, does it require how many times a year they should meet? Or is it when they need to meet?
No, so when you establish your advisory bodies, you actually specify what their schedule will be.
Okay.
So there's no requirement on the Brown Act, but you can establish that as the city council.
When you come back with those revised rules or suggestions, can you have potential for revised meetings? For example, I think we said meet monthly for Historic Preservation Committee, but they didn't need to meet monthly and they didn't meet at all. So just to make it, so people that apply aren't disappointed when they apply for one thing and then the reality is different.
Or if it's, if it'd be better to have it quarterly.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, monthly, quarterly, something that's going to be easier for people to make the meetings.
So their expectations are similar to what they get.
And just to add on, tack on, please include the commissions in the discussion to see what ideas they have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, seven point four. Because we moved seven point three to after seven point five, seven point four. Councilmembers, appointments to intergovernment agencies. Is everybody happy with their appointments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, nobody else change it? Okay, good, that was easy. Seven point five, the appointment of councilmembers to.
We still have to do it, right? There's no public comment.
That's right. Okay, public comment, seven point four. Committee members' appointments to intergovernment agencies. Any public comment?
No public.
No public comment. I'm going to close public comment.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion.
Okay, I move.
Second.
Things.
Moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Vice Mayor Kik. Any discussion of the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Seven point five, appointment of councilmembers to the Council Subcommittee on Advisory Bodies. So this, one second here, let me get there. Okay, so judging by the rotation here, we would go with this would be, I would recommend Councilmember Barrientos and the current Vice Mayor Brittany Kik. Although she will not be Vice Mayor as, as she moves on to this committee, but do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, do we have a, a public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment. I'm going to close the, close public comment period, bring it back. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Seven point three, the appointment of Vice Mayor for the period of 2023, 2024. The Vice Mayor has a very interesting position in that there is only one person on the council that I can talk to because of the Brown Act. And I typically rely very heavily on the Vice Mayor because I can bounce ideas off them and get input, because sometimes I think it's a great idea and other times I can say, are you kidding? So I appreciate having that counsel of the Vice Mayor as an additional frame of reference. So with that, I would like to thank Brittany Kik for, in a great appreciation for serving as Vice Mayor for the City of Livermore, because I knew that, know that takes a great deal of time. And when I can't be at an event, I can rely on the Vice Mayor to, to be there in my stead to represent the city and carry the flag. So with that.
You're always somehow everywhere. So it was a very easy job.
That's what I'm trying to do. So with that, I'd like to present Vice Mayor Kik a plaque in appreciation of serving as.
Thank you.
And with that, I would like to ask Councilmember Carling if he would be willing to serve as my Vice Mayor for the next year.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Do I have a, a second for that nomination?
Second.
And public comment, is there any public comment on this?
No public comments.
Okay, no public comment, closed the public comment period. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signifies by saying aye.
Aye.
It passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you so much. Onto eight committee reports, matters initiated by the City Council. Councilmember Branning.
It's been a long two weeks for me, so I have nothing to officially add to the record.
Okay. Councilmember Carling.
Thank you. So there is a holiday parade that I participated in. Also, Saturday night was menorah lighting in front of the banquet. The mayor and I were there. The other thing that I'd like to mention is that for the benefit of the, the public, that Stop Waste is going to have their grant application opportunities opening in early January, middle of January. There's a million dollars in grant funding and just briefly, the the categories are food waste, prevention and recovery, surplus food, donation equipment, community food systems, reusable foodware, reuse and repair, reusable transport packaging. This community has been very successful in the past in getting some of these grants and I, I suspect that this information will be on the city website. I assume Judy probably has, already has all this information from Stop Waste. So I suggest that people that are interested in this that are trying to stand up some nonprofits or other organizations that are concerned about food waste and reusable foodware and that kind of thing to look at the opportunities, again, a million dollars worth of grants being, the applications due January 17th. Lots of other things going on with Stop Waste. I won't bore you. It's getting late. So if you have a chance, go to their website, because they do some really, really important stuff for this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kik.
Uh, nothing to report officially. I did go to the holiday parade. That was very fun. And then I would like to ask staff, if agreed upon by the council, to relook into the Eagle Initiative for 2030. And where that is appropriate. I don't know if it's appropriate to be in the development agreement or if it's appropriate to be in our climate action plan. The appropriate spot for us to make a statement. If you could look into that, that would be great.
All right. That's it. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so Livermore was, there, everything, the, this whole bunch of stuff that I have been involved in. But Visit California recognized Livermore as one of the most holiday spirited, spirited cities in California. Top three in the Bay Area. And because of the things that happened over this weekend, things like Deacon Dave's House of the Dove, which has over eight hundred seventy-five thousand lights. It is spectacular. The theme is Through the Eyes of a Child. There's a three-story castle as you walk onto the property. We also had the menorah lighting, as Councilmember Carling mentioned. Huge crowd of folks in the downtown. The parade, there were over twenty-five thousand people in the downtown. It was spectacular. And the thing that really brought the notice for Visit California is we have a wine trolley that goes around to the light displays. So that's what focused them on Livermore. But I think really the heart of Livermore and the heart and the holidays, that is what's remarkable. And things like Deacon Dave's and the menorah and our community coming together in the downtown, that's what it's about. So with that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and best wishes to everybody for the new year. Thank you.